Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2016. It's the new year. This is a Fairmont area school board meeting. Our roll call this evening is Rufus Rodriguez is not here yet, but I think he's just running a little late, but every other member is here. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Always on the first meeting in January for the school board, we do election of officers, which is what we will be doing now. So I would look for a nomination for the president of the board.
I nominate Diane Gerhart for president.
Thank you, Nicole.
I'll move that nomination cease and Diane be elected president on unanimous ballot.
Thank you. Julie, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. So a motion by Julie, second by Dan, to present a unanimous ballot for Diane Gerhart for president. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then for vice president, I'd look for a nomination for vice president.
I nominate Nicole Green for vice president.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any other nominations?
I'll move to that nomination cease and that Nicole be elected vice president on unanimous ballot.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second? I'll second that. So I have a motion by Julie, second by Diane, to elect Nicole Green, the vice president, on a unanimous ballot. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then for clerk, I would entertain nominations for the clerk.
I nominate Dan Brookins for clerk.
Thank you, Nicole. Are there any other nominations?
I'll move that the nominations cease and that Dan be elected clerk on unanimous ballot.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Danielle. So I have a motion by Julie, second by Danielle, to elect Dan Brookins as a clerk. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then treasurer?
I nominate Julie Lowey for treasurer.
Thank you, Nicole. Are there any other nominations? Then I'll move that nomination cease and that Julie be elected the treasurer on a unanimous ballot. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. So I have a motion by Diane, a second by Dan, to elect Julie treasurer on the unanimous ballot. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then that's the election of officers, and thank you all for being willing to serve in those capacities. Next on our agenda is the minutes from our last meeting, which was last year, in December 15th, 2015. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
I have, and I'll make a motion to approve the December 15th, 2015, school board meeting minutes. Meeting, yeah, meeting minutes.
Thanks, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. A motion by Julie, second by Nicole, to approve the December 15th, 2015, school board meeting minutes as printed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then you should have an agenda, and I have one update on that, and that is under the community reports and celebration in school. Community reports, K pals, Carrie Duhmeyer is sick today, so we're gonna table that and move it to the February meeting. Any other additions, corrections to the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the January 12th, 2016, school board meeting agenda as amended.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. A motion by Nicole, a second by Julie, to approve the January 12th, 2016, school board meeting agenda with the correction to the community reports. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. But then we will move to the celebrations in school community reports, and we have Jackie Lemay here to talk about the breakfast in the classroom and the fresh fruit program. And she's doing some handouts, but welcome to the meeting tonight.
This was supposed to be a PowerPoint, and I was here earlier, but I couldn't get it to work.
Okay.
Just not techy or...
Thank you.
I think the laptop has been corrupted and I didn't want to show.
Chartwells.
Well, thank you for having me again. I was here last spring, and I plan to, or intend to come to at least four or three more, or invite myself to three more school board meetings over the next, before next December. So you'll see me again, and so if you have any questions, you can just save them up or ask me now or whenever. So I'll just start with the first item that I would like to talk about, which is the fresh fruit and vegetable program. The purpose of the fresh fruit and vegetable program, which Sue maybe had talked to you the last time you were here, back in November, is to expand the variety of fruits and vegetables that children may not have at home. I think that's very valuable because I don't know if all families have the resources or the capability of having unusual or different fruits and vegetables that they would not normally have at home. And also to increase the children's fruit and vegetable consumption, which obviously are, that's just a drop in the bucket of what really what this whole program is about. But a little story, we serve red peppers in our schools, fresh red peppers with ranch dressing. And you know, as you're coming as a kindergartner or as a fourth grader, or even like a 10th grader, you see the red peppers, but you don't really wanna try them because wow, you don't know what that is. So it's kinda neat because the students, when they're with their peers, they'll be like, well, you know, if Johnny's trying it, I'll try it. So then it hopefully will increase our consumption, or our kids' participation in trying real fresh fruits and vegetables during lunchtime. So it's a very valuable program. You know, there's, I could go on and on. We could have a lunch and talk about fresh fruit and vegetable program. It's very valuable. I was kind of hesitant because there are challenges to it, but I think it's been very good, and I think the teachers have also enjoyed it. I did send out a survey last week. I'm hoping that they will, you can get some results from that survey and see what the teachers think, and then maybe do a little survey with the kids too at the end of the year. As I have written here, there's a $20,100 grant for this year. That's because we have over a 50% free and reduced rate in our school at the elementary level. We're operating three days a week because that's kind of how I budgeted, budgeted the program. And I use about one to two, for sure, one or one and a half labor hours every day to prep this fresh fruit and vegetable program. And I think that we'll probably expand that to four days a week because I have to get up to at least a $2,500 monthly expense to use up that $20,000 because we ran it from October and we'll run it through May. We do portion out the fresh produce for every classroom. We put them in little cups and we roll it out to the hallways, and then the students or the teacher will come and grab it from the, this rolling cart that's in the middle of the hallway. And then the kids, they take it, they look at it, they try it, they taste it. And hopefully, everyone tastes it. Now, I don't, I don't think I have a lot, no, I didn't have, bring the whole list. So every week when they try something new, today was, tomorrow is Brussels sprouts. I'll send an information sheet, and it'll say, this is what's up with Brussels sprouts. Where does it come from? What family does it come from? What state does it come from? Little tiny, nothing real complicated because these are obviously preschool through second grade kids. And then a giant picture of what it is.
Is it raw? The Brussels sprouts are raw?
I debated that, and we decided to serve them raw tomorrow.
Okay.
We can.
I've never tried that.
We could steam them, but we're decided to make, to serve them raw because what difference will it make? They won't try them, will they, okay, let's not be so negative. They will try them, whether they're cooked or raw. I've never tried them raw either, but I, they're, we get them cut and clipped so my staff doesn't have to spend a lot of time, you know, cutting off the ends and cutting it up because our produce provider does a lot of processing of these vegetables for us. So I'm thinking that we're just gonna put them in a little cup and they'll try them.
So have you ever, you've never cooked any of them? They're all just have been raw?
According to the program rules, once a week, you can provide a cooked vegetable. So on Halloween, we cooked our pumpkin, because I just can't imagine having raw pumpkin. And I think we also did a, well, the cook said the squash tasted fine without cooking it, but I don't believe that, so I hope that next time. We have a little more communication with my staff, but you can, you can serve one item per week that's cooked. But we do not, we do not want to use cooked product because we don't have the time and energy for that.
Right.
So, you know, there are a lot of unusual things that we're serving, so you know, it's unusual for me, it's unusual for my staff. The only really interesting thing that I also have on this page, I thought, is that, that every product that we serve has to be produced in the United States and grown in the United States. So the challenge has been this winter, well, what are you gonna serve? Because you can't get certain things from California at even this time of year. And also because the conditions this year are, the growing season is not going very well this year. I was just gonna, if you flip the page, I would like you to, no, if you, tell me if you can recognize any of the products that we've served. These are like, not the actual products that we, you know, we had, that came from our provider. But this is what we served, and if anybody could tell me any of those items, probably one for sure.
Rhubarb?
Rhubarb, cherry tomatoes or?
That's Swiss chard.
I was gonna say, it's either beets or Swiss chard.
Yeah, Swiss chard. We served rainbow chard, rainbow chard. So.
Choked cherries?
Choked cherries or ground cherries?
Well, the one on the right is the yellow tomatoes.
Yellow tomatoes.
And the one on top is a kumquat.
Oh, that's a kumquat.
And kumquats are really interesting. They tasted like little tiny oranges, and you eat them with the peelings. They were interesting. And of course, my very, 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 very favorite is the ground cherry. I bought those from a producer in my hometown, like Crystal, and she had millions of them. And we bought cases and cases, and they were the funnest thing to eat. I think you guys, you guys tried them? Yeah, the business office tried them, so they were very fun.
And then mustard you tried?
Oh, on the right, left-hand side?
Yeah.
No, that's just a, that's a canned photo.
Okay. What is that? What is that?
On the left-hand side? I don't know. I didn't know. I don't know. This is a Chartwells template, so I don't know what that is. Yeah. But the ground cherries were my favorite.
I remember when we spoke with the K2 as a board, the K, or I'm sorry, E2 as a board, they talked about how, about this program and how interesting it was and how, I didn't even recognize some of the fruits and vegetables. Do you send home something to parents or put it on the website that says, so parents and families know this is what we're introducing? This is a place to look for possible recipes to use these?
This is what we tried.
Or, yeah, or what we tried. I found it fascinating. I would like to go out and, some of these, you know, find them in my grocery store and know how to prepare them or try them myself.
That's a very good idea. I have not gone that far because they're really more concerned about nutrition in the classroom, like teaching the kids, or introducing it to them and actually tasting it right there. I don't, that's something I should expand on for sure. No, it's a really good idea.
But if they never get it again, you know, they'll never remember.
Right.
They go home and they say, we had this at school, and you know, they couldn't remember the name or something, but you know, at least gives the parents a link.
I think it's wonderful. I really do to expose kids to so many new foods.
I have a calendar that I, that I forgot to bring along. I have a calendar that I, that I give to the teachers, and I'm thinking they might take a copy of that and send it home with the parent, to the parents. But that's something I should maybe add.
You could probably post it.
Add that to the, the monthly newsletter?
Yes.
Or post it on too, with the breakfast, by the breakfast menu stuff.
Yeah.
Post it on our Facebook page also.
Right.
There's lots of places to put it on.
No, I always wonder the best way to communicate with parents these days.
Multiple ways.
Yeah, just keep hammering them.
Yep.
I really like the newsletter. I think that Mary Cole puts out, I think that's really valuable so that there'll be another page to add.
I think it's just great to, just the kids' exposure to some of these foods that, you know, maybe they will never have it again, but maybe they will. And maybe they didn't care for it the first time, you know, but then it, when it's repeated again, you know, it takes so many times to try something before you decide you really like it.
Absolutely.
But I think it's just great.
Will we hope that, are we gonna qualify again next year? Well, we'll find out, I'm sure. I don't know when we find out, in the spring?
I think it's, yeah, I haven't seen it.
Spring or summer. So as long as the money keeps coming, you know, I'm sure we'll, you know, technically, you know, I mean, I'm, to start something new, it can be very daunting, and my staff always feels like, you know, there's not enough time in a day to get these things done. And, you know, yes, maybe, or I don't know, you know, you never really know what goes on in their thought process. But I think that everybody has seen the value of it, and it comes back to them that they see the value of it. So I'm hoping that we can expand it even to maybe this 3-6 side next year. So, and I think there'll be money for that, so that would be something we would probably do next year as well. Moving on to the breakfast in the classroom. This has been a big push and a very successful endeavor for our school. So we talked back in early December about how we'd like to have a hot breakfast for all K through six. And on January 4th, we started with the hot entree for the whole 3-6 side. And as you can see here, we added some labor and we added equipment to expand the service of hot breakfast, which takes a little bit more thinking, it takes a little more time, a little more different, days different because you're prepping hot things instead of like packing it in a, on a rolling cart for the next day. I don't know if it's gonna be a rolling success. We had 550 breakfasts served yesterday. Today, we had 541. That's the whole school. That's, that's the whole K, K through six. But you know, I kind of thought that with a hot breakfast, we would really, the kids on the 3-6 side would really be pumped up for it. So we'll have to do some interesting, some interesting advertising and some promotions to get them to, to participate.
Well, a couple of the teachers said, like, 95% of the kids in their class took the breakfast, so they thought it was a good thing, but, yeah.
I just thought it would be overwhelmingly, like, I thought, you know, with an enrollment of 889 kids, I just thought it would just be crazy successful, and I just haven't seen the numbers yet. But it's early, you know, and it's winter, and maybe it's because we need to work out some kinks on my end. I, I, I'm positive, I'm positive. I'm sure we'll, we'll get through it. I think it'll be, just, we're gonna serve some different things in February. I'm, I think, on the next page, I wrote oatmeal, maybe find some volunteers to help me with making breakfast sandwiches because that'll be kind of heavy duty. We talk about, you know, with the, with the fresh fruit on the K2 side, maybe there should be more different fresh fruit on the 3-6 side, such as berries or, you know, different kinds of, I can't think of fresh fruit off the top of my head, but berries like ring a bell, like melon or something like that, instead of the apple, banana, orange, apple, banana, orange, you know. Rotation can be kind of monotonous, I think, for kids. But, so I think adding variety will help for February.
Yeah, that's what we thought too, and then one of the teachers said, I eat the same thing for breakfast every day.
That's a conversation that my kitchen has too, because we're like, well, what should we add? What should we do? And they're like, well, when I get up in the morning, I have toast. I mean, every morning, everybody has toast for breakfast. You know, my kids have cereal for breakfast, so why, what's, what's the difference, you know? Now, the other thing is, for instance, on Wednesday, tomorrow, we're serving a pancake on a stick, which is like, kind of a rather spicy sausage that's covered in a pancake, right? Well, maybe some kids don't like sausage, or maybe some kids think it's too heavy, or maybe kids are just turned off by it. So our thoughts yesterday, when I was brainstorming with my staff, is that we're going to offer a cereal bowl to go, so they can either choose a cereal bowl or the pancake on a stick. So if they really don't want the pancake and the stick, because I can understand that, they can have a bowl of Cheerios. We've never done that before because we have never offered the Cheerio, like a bowl that requires milk poured into it because of the potential mess. But we think that perhaps if only two or three kids take that cereal, then at least you'd be increasing your numbers by potentially, you know, 30 kids and, and we giving them what they want. Then if they take a milk and a cereal and a fruit, you know, they're still getting the nutrition that they need for the day, which would be a good option for them, we think. So if you turn, if you're on the breakfast in the classroom page with my staff, there's a picture of Dorothy with a rolling cart. And I don't know if you've seen pictures of what the rolling breakfast looked like, you know, in the past. We, we packed these totes with the notables. That was our breakfast in the past. And the notables had a kit, they had a breakfast bar, sometimes they had sunflower seeds in them and juice, like a little tangerine juice. And so you pack these little breakfast packs in these big totes, and you pass the tote onto every classroom with a crate of milk and their fruit, their fresh fruit. And then the teachers would give the kids what they need, and then they would go around and pack everything up, put it on the rolling cart, and take it to the kitchen and count it to see, you know, what our numbers were. So to go from that to, in the middle, you can see that we were serving hot pizza, hot breakfast pizza. So that's what we're doing in the 3-6 side. And we'll be doing that on the K2 side as well in February. And then, of course, a little pancake on a stick there. So my, so my staff likes this breakfast program, and, you know, again, we just have to work out some little kinks to make sure we keep our numbers increasing and our, our customers happy. And lastly, this was not on the agenda, but I just thought I'd throw that in here, that this week, company-wide, Chartwells and in our, are all of our K2 schools, running a Eat, Learn, Live Week, and that's this week, we run it every year. And it's promoting things that are important to us and important to hopefully administration, food service, and, and students. So tomorrow, we're gonna sample homemade granola that we made. Hopefully, the kids will try something new, you know, see homemade's good, you know, trying something that they wouldn't normally have at breakfast time. On Thursday, we're gonna serve them, they can get their own parfait, they're gonna serve their own yogurt bar, and then with homemade granola and fresh fruits, fresh berries, because it's my favorite. And then at the elementary school on Thursday, we're gonna do a citrus table. So we're gonna take all of our oranges and grapefruit, lemons and limes, and make a salad and do this big promotion, and I'm hoping the kids will, the 3-6, 3-6 kids don't get much for sampling, but they, they would, I'm sure they would appreciate more hands-on things in nutrition, so I'm excited about that. And then lastly, the first week of February, I'm going to do a survey that's operated by text, or I can send a link to the kids by email, and I'm gonna set up a table at the high school, and the kids can come and use the iPads and take a survey, a cafeteria survey, and win prizes. And so those are those things that we're doing this winter. Oh, and just to tell you, the picture on the top left-hand, that's peanut butter and bananas, we served that. That was an Elvis Presley banana, Elvis Presley breakfast that we served last month. And, and the middle picture, pho, if anybody is a Asian or like, not Asian, it's called, help me.
Thai.
Thai, thank you. Thai food. We tried our own Fairmont Thai homemade pho, and it was really delicious. And then, of course, we had a little cream cheese, fresh strawberry topper down there.
Was that peanut butter banana thing a big success?
Well, it's hard to say. I tried to do a lot of promotions on Thursdays, and on Thursdays, there's a group that does pancakes.
Pancakes, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm competing with the pancake kiddos. So I, I think, I took, I did go around and talk to some students, I said that they like it. And of course, they did like it because it's cream cheese and strawberry and the bananas and the, actually, you know what? I should tell you, it's not peanut butter because we don't serve much peanut butter. It's some sun butter, sun butter and bananas. I, I think they liked it. It was a very small fraction of people I asked.
The kids all shook up, right?
So if you have any questions, I'll be back.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. I think it's great for kids to try stuff, but I think too, if we make parents more aware, maybe that'll help.
Encourage them.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe even just to try something different, because you get tired of thinking up some, and making corn and peas and beans.
No, some of these things that they're trying, you know, like my son's in second grade, and there's, some of those are quite expensive at the grocery store, so I don't wanna buy, I don't spend $8 on something that, to make it, you know, where there's a 90% chance that he won't like it, at least this way, they get to try it. And I'm still waiting. He'll find something that he likes eventually. But it saves us the bother without having to, you know, it, it's a benefit for us that way.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is superintendent's report and calendars. Superintendent Brown?
Thanks, Diane. Calendars, just a few items to talk about. First of all, just a reminder, tomorrow at noon, there will be a group of representatives of the Staff Welfare Committee, and Sue Nelson and myself will be meeting with the Southern Plains folks at their office. A meeting that starts at 12. Hopefully, it won't last more than two hours. But we'll be looking at the proposal to consider, it's gonna be kind of an educational session tomorrow, not a decision-making day tomorrow, but simply an instructional, informational day about how to work with paraprofessionals in the future, whether we hire them or whether they are hired through the Southern Plains Education Co-op. So that should be an informative meeting. Just a reminder also that right now, there are four school board members and myself that will be attending the Minnesota School Board Conference, annual conference that's held this week. It will be held Thursday and Friday, January 14th and January 15th, so we'll be up in Minneapolis for that. And that's about it for the calendar. I just wanna point out, we have two teachers in our audience tonight. We have Mary Jo Karikas on the left, and Mary Jo is our business education teacher. Teaches the seventh grade classes and a few other business classes. And Erin Myers is with us tonight also, and she's teaching this year.
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade. And we're glad to have her back in our district, so we want to welcome those two faculty members here. Just the two things I wanna bring to the board's attention. On New Year's Eve, I actually went to the Minnesota Department of Education for a one-day training session on the Minnesota Career Information System Junior Version. Now, this is a software package that we've used at the high school for a number of years, and this ties in with the world's best workforce. But during the last week of September, Jim Davison and I will be going into the sixth-grade social studies classrooms, and we'll be working with the students, it's a four-day week for students, and we'll be working with the sixth-grade social studies students to have them actually start building their Minnesota Career Information System profile, and they'll be doing an interest inventory. There's actually three different inventories that they can do that week, so we'll be working with them. And all the information that the sixth graders put into the system, when they go to the high school in seventh grade, it will be automatically transferred into the MCIS system. So this will be a profile that the students will then use for seven years from sixth grade all the way until they graduate. And then also, the last week in January is when our newsletter goes out, and we'll be sending out instructions to parents about how to take our Quaglia Institute survey. And we will be surveying all of our students, all of our staff, and all of our parents on a nationwide survey. It's called the Quaglia Institute Survey, and it's a survey that doesn't take that long to do, probably about 12 to 15 minutes. It's an online survey, and we get results back within a week, but it will be just a great way. We really feel it's important that we survey our students and our staff and our parents to find out, how do they feel that we're doing as a school district? And it should give us some, just some great detailed information. The Quaglia Institute has surveyed millions of... The Quaglia Institute has surveyed millions of parents and teachers and students throughout this country over the last fifteen years. And so this will be a great survey to get completed. And we'll actually administer the survey during the first two weeks in February. And in the January newsletter that goes out, the last week in January, we'll be teaching parents how to go online and how to take the survey. And then we'll be administering it to the students and the staff the first and second week of February. So that'll be interesting. And I don't have any updated enrollment numbers for the board tonight. We have a number of students that are, I think yesterday, we enrolled six students at the high school. We just, you know, we're getting ready for a semester break, and we just have students coming and going. So by our next school board meeting, I'll give you some detailed information exactly where we are enrollment-wise. We're looking pretty good.
That's it?
That's it.
Any questions for Superintendent Brown? All right, thank you. Next, we'll move to financial business. We have a donation, Dan.
Yes, in Appendix A in your packet, I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas the Fairmont Police Officers Association has donated two-hundred fifty dollars toward the cost of the sixth grade spring field trip to Fort Stelling and the Science Museum, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second? Second? Thank you, Nicole. So I have Dan introducing the resolution and Nicole with the second, and we have to voice vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we thank the Police Officers Association for their donation.
Usually, the sixth grade field trip is to the state capitol, but they can't go there this year because of the renovations. So that's why they're going to a different place this year.
All right, then we'll move to financial reports. And Sue Nelson, our business manager, is here to go over that. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight on the agenda, we have the December two thousand fifteen Treasurers Report and Single Check and Wire Transfers from December eleventh through January seventh, and Payment of the December twenty-second and January twelfth bills. So if you start with the December two thousand fifteen Treasurers Report, if you find that sheet, that lists our funds and different accounts within our funds and our end-of-the-month cash balance. So it's a balance as of December thirty-first. And if you flip that over, we start the top. We have an expenditure report as of the end of December. So we have our funds on the left, and then we have our board-approved FY sixteen budget. And our monthly expenditures for December were one point seven million. Our year-to-date expenditures, eight point one-three-two million. So to date, we've spent just under thirty-five percent of our budget overall, and the general fund, thirty-six point two percent as of December thirty-first. And then the middle section is our wires and transfers from that December eleventh through January seventh. The first one is the Pathways two-dollar scholarship dollars came in. And then we had some revenue share from when we make payments through Commerce Bank. The next three are associated with the December payroll. Then I transferred some money in from the liquid asset fund. And then the bottom one then is the P-card payment of forty-seven thousand dollars. And then we'll go through a few more of those details here in a moment. And then at the very bottom, you can see that our total expenditures for the December payroll were nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Any questions? Then you should have a report that Judy just handed to you tonight. That's the P-card expenditures. I just had one to bring to your attention. We're paying EMC Insurance thirty-seven thousand six hundred and one dollars. And that's for our property insurance and work comp. That's, we're paying those, that in thirds. And then there's a variety of other things, some travel expenses. We always have our waste management and cell phone expenses paid through P-card. So a variety of things there. Do you have any questions on the P-card? Okay, then we can go to the Single Check. We had one payment to Mankato State, or Minnesota State University, Mankato. It's for tuition for a special education teacher who is needing a different license. And then we have two registers. One is the December twenty-second register. And now, because we didn't have a board meeting on December twenty-second, Julie and I did get together and review this prior to the, the checks being mailed out. I just have a couple to bring to your attention there. The third one down to DeWor Electric, that was paid through Commerce Bank, so there's not a check number. That was for the electrical, for the greenhouse, for the ag program. And then check number fifty-seven nine oh seven made out to the city of Fairmont. Two thousand dollars of that is for some sand-salt mix that we're purchasing from the city for our parking lots. And then check number fifty-seven nine twenty-six made out to LifeTrack Services. This is for a survey for the class of two thousand sixteen. There'll be a variety of surveys for these students, and they'll have received five different letters. One is an exit survey, a graduation survey, an advanced grad survey, some things like that. Any questions on that register? And then we can move to the register data today, just a couple to bring to your attention there. The fourth one down made out to Day Plumbing, again, through Commerce Bank, so there's not a check number. And this is for the plumbing and mechanical construction for the greenhouse for the ag program. And check number fifty-seven nine fifty-seven made out to Dakin Applied. This is our maintenance agreement for our chillers at both of our buildings. And then the very last one, the wire payment to US Bank. This is paying for principal and interest on our, our three of our bonds. And that, those dollars will be wired out later this week. Any questions on that register? Julie and I did review everything prior to the meeting.
If there are no questions, I would make a motion to approve the December two thousand fifteen Treasurers Report and the Single Check Wire Transfers for December eleventh two thousand fifteen to January seventh two thousand sixteen, and Payment of the Bills for December twenty-second two thousand fifteen and January twelfth two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve the December two thousand fifteen Treasurers Report and the transfers and the payment of bills for December and January. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sue, for your report. There, we have no old business to deal with on our agendas. We'll go to new business and board committee assignments. I had talked to everyone this, in January, or in December, and have, everyone's agreed to be on the same committees as we had for this year. So Staff Welfare will be Diane, Nicole, and Rufus. Operations, Dan, Julie, and Danielle. Curriculum and Policy is Diane, Nicole, and Rufus. And then Dan will be the Athletic Council Rep and Legislative Rep. Nicole will serve on Continuing Education. Southern Plains Co-op Board is Julie. CER will be Danielle, and SDCC will be Nicole. So I would entertain a motion to approve or not those committee assignments.
I move to approve the school board committee assignments for two thousand sixteen as presented.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. So I have the motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the committee assignments for two thousand sixteen. Any further discussion or concerns about that? Well, thanks for agreeing to serve again on those committees and appreciate all your work that you do. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Pay Equity Report. Rufus?
The school district is required to report to the Pay Equity Office of Minnesota Management and Budget to ensure that the district is in compliance with pay equity statutes. The report is due by the end of January two thousand sixteen for wages and positions in place. At the end of December two thousand fifteen, the district must show that it does not have a pattern of underpayment to female-dominated job classifications. The district must also show that female-dominated job classifications are not at a disadvantage for health insurance benefits. Various tests are used to determine compliance. And the various tests demonstrate that the district is in compliance, and the information will now be sent to the Minnesota Management and Budget Office for review and analysis. We will receive a notice from that office after they complete their analysis. Sue Nelson worked with our consultant, Bob Bjorklund, during this process. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Pay Equity Report as presented for wages and position in place on December thirty-first two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, Rufus. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. So a motion by Rufus, second by Julie, to approve the Pay Equity Report as presented in Appendix B, which was our staff on December thirty-first two thousand fifteen. Any questions about that report? Because Sue will be here to answer those. No questions about it? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Then we have a restoration project, Dan.
At our Operations Committee meeting last week, Dave Turnberg went over this with us. He reviewed four different bids received for the partial restoration of the roof at the junior senior high school building. There were four bids total. The low bid was received from Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated at a price of one-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars. The different bids are enclosed in Appendix C. The roof restoration project is going to be undertaken over the course of eight years. And Dave has worked out a plan where different sections of the building will be taken in each year. We have four different sections that would be started on this summer. Three areas just above the main entrance and one between the main entrance and the gymnasiums. The roof in that area is currently, was last done, I believe, in nineteen ninety-two. And we did approve the bid at our Operations Committee meeting, looking ahead at this plan. So I would make a motion to approve the bid of WTI in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars for the partial roof restoration at the Fairmont Junior Senior High School Building, the project to be done in the summer of two thousand sixteen.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. A motion by Dan, a second by Julie, to approve the bid from the WTI for that partial roof restoration. Appreciate that there's a map thing on the back of the bid tabulation so you can see where it is and what's going on.
Yeah, and those are the proposed areas in the years that, you know, those sections are going to be done. Should they get in there and find that there's a need to do, you know, change some of those sections, you know, the replacement or the, you know, the repairs, that we can change those at that time, but it's just, you know, we're trying to look forward, we're trying to, you know, be proactive with taking care of our buildings and that. And, you know, it's just, it's just this whole plan that was provided to us from the state to be able to levy for those new dollars to provide for these projects. You know, otherwise, what those, you know, everything like that came kind of out of our general fund. It came, you know, you had to, between paying for students' education, for paying for books, for paying for teachers, for paying for, you know, just classroom supplies, you know, there was kind of a fight for that versus how you fix your buildings up. And, you know, we did go through a great restoration project here a couple of years ago, and we're just being very proactive and trying to take the best care of our buildings so they last for future generations.
Thank you.
Yeah, that legislation that was passed last year really recreates a great opportunity for, for districts like ours to, to do that. And it's very important to have, you know, good solid buildings and, and a good, healthy environment there. And it's my opinion that as we go along here to do these projects, you know, piece by piece, rather than waiting for everything to fall apart and, you know, go, you know, before, we had to go through an election to, you know, to get the approval to do things like this. Meanwhile, your facilities are falling apart, and you oftentimes have to pass this great big project that has large debt service on it. Whereas in this case, we're basically levying as we go along and doing it in smaller pieces, smaller amounts, and it'll be much more cost-effective in the long run.
And before it gets to be a big, huge cash.
Before we have, yeah, before we have water dripping into the classrooms.
I mean, it's no different than what people do for their own homes. You know, you budget and you, you know, take care of things as they need or prior to, you know, be in desperate need. But, you know, just taking care of things that we have and preserving it for all students. And, and, you know, this, this legislation to provide us for this construction money and this, you know, taking care of our buildings, larger school districts have had that for years. And it's just with the recent legislature change that it's been made available for smaller districts as such as our own. So, you know, we're very fortunate that we have that ability to levy that amount every year. And it's just, you know, compared to the rest of our budget, it's, it's a smaller amount. But like Dan says, it's, it's, you know, it's better that we can just budget, take care of it versus, you know, having to propose all this, go out to, you know, because to do a levy is expensive, too. But, you know, it's just saving that money, and we're using it as we, you know, need it now. So, yep.
Well, the projected cost of roof replacement for the schools over the next eight years is about one point one to one point two million dollars. And by doing it piecemeal, this first year is a hundred seventy-five thousand or a hundred seventy-eight thousand. You know, the other thing to point out, too, is that, the school board last month, we increased our levy for the following year by five percent. But over that five percent, three point seven percent of that five percent is, is for capital improvements.
I just pulled that up on my phone. I was going to go to that. So I'm glad you mentioned it.
Well, go ahead.
No, that's fine. You just go ahead. But, yeah, it's, it's, without doing the roof repair levy would have been, you know, one point five-two percent. But with that, you know, it's only three point four percent that, you know, that that cost would be. So it's, you know, it's just really, it's an efficient way to do that. And it's two point seven of the whole five percent increase is what the health and safety, what would have been health and safety funds is what we're being able to use, so.
I think we had four very good bids. They were all very tight, very close together. And I would tend to think that we're going to continue to see more competitive bids on those projects in the future, just because they're smaller. I think it's an easy project for most construction companies that do this kind of work. I think it's an easy way for them to do it, because they can do several of these type of projects during the summer, rather than have to set up one great big operation. More cost-effective for them, too.
Did this company bid for the total project? And, and this is what was broken down for this? I mean, in two years, we might have a different company?
Yeah, it'll be different one every time.
Okay, so every, every year, it's a different bid?
Yep. Because, you know, along with that, we can't look into the future as to what other costs would be, you know, and, you know, same for the, the construction company, not wanting to, you know, we may get a better deal, or we may, you know, depending what other costs are, it may cost us more to do it in the future. We just don't know, depending on what the markets are and that. So, yep, it's just for this project.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion by Dan and second by Julie to approve that bid of one seventy-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred from WTI for that roof restoration. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Then personnel, we have one employment to talk about. Nicole?
Yes, Michelle, Principal Michelle Rosen is recommending that Taylor Egland be employed as a long-term substitute teacher when Mrs. Tredow is, is on leave. Taylor is a recent graduate of Minnesota State University, Mankato, where she earned her degree in elementary education. Ms. Egland, for this position, we're excited for it because she's completed her student teaching with Mrs. Tredow, and she knows the students in her classroom, and she's knowledgeable about the curriculum and how Mrs. Tredow's classroom is run. So it'll be an easier transition for the students during that period of time. With that, I move to approve the, excuse me, the employment of Ms. Taylor Egland as a long-term substitute first-grade teacher effective, is that right, twelve fifteen, fifteen?
I don't think so. I don't think the date is right.
Yes, it is. Yeah, she actually started because Mrs. Tredow's on kind of another special assignment during this transition.
So effective twelve fifteen fifteen, and continuing through the end of the school year.
Right, thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. It's just because we're in sixteen, it seems like that shouldn't be. Okay. So I have a motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the employment of Taylor England, Egland as the long-term substitute for first grade. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, then we're to the board committee reports, and there was an Operations Committee meeting on January fifth. Dan?[1769.73]
A lot of that from last Tuesday was in reference to the roofing project that we just talked about with Dave Turnberg. A couple of the other items that we looked at. We also reviewed a proposal by the INS group. And that would be to study and provide some architectural drawings to modify the main entrance and the office area at the junior senior high school building. We've been looking for a way to make the traffic flow there a little bit better, to make it a lot more customer friendly and to keep the, you know, let the kids be able to get there and do the business they need to as well. So we're talking about some different plans and we approved a study to be done by INS to provide some different drawings and different ideas. The cost of that was four thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. And we also had a discussion about small appliances in the classrooms. It was brought to us by Dave Turnberg that many teachers have things like coffee makers or small refrigerators or microwave ovens. The insurance carrier that we have for the building suggests that it is important to conduct an inventory of that, of the things that teachers have personally brought into the classrooms. And then we will have that on file in case something needs to be looked at. So hopefully that inventory will be done by the end of this month. And we will also, as an operations committee being, looking at the ten-year plan of facilities. A little bit of that was covered in our roofing project, but that was also part of the new legislation last year to, for districts to be able to levy for these types of things. Then we will have a long-range plans that says approximately what year, what kind of projects we will be looking to do, whether it's bleachers or if it's.
PAC seeds?
Yeah. Windows, anything that might need to be replaced down the road to kind of budget out, here's the place where we plan on using this money. And that's going to be required of all districts. We have, we have one that we've been working on. We had one that we, right when the plan was announced, we put one together. And then we'll be going a little bit more in-depth with that here in the near future.
All right, any questions for Dan or operations? All right then, we had a three-through-six staff board meeting and Nicole and I were at that meeting. And so Nicole, you want to tell us what happened?
Yes, we met this past Wednesday with the three-through-six staff. It was a wonderful meeting, very informative. And it was good to meet with the teachers. We talked about the new reading curriculum that the K six teachers have. And they said it is a very challenging curriculum as all new curriculums are. But this one seems to be, it's a very driven curriculum. The kids are learning a lot. One of the teachers said, first time that, and this was third and fourth grade, the first time that prepositional phrases were mentioned to the students. They were, they didn't have a clue what they were, which is understandable in third and fourth grade. But the fact that they're learning that in third and fourth grade speaks volumes to this curriculum. They also talked about the need with this curriculum. There's a lot about writing papers and presentation and the need for our elementary students to be trained in keyboarding. Currently, we have keyboarding at the seventh grade level and that they would, they would really appreciate having these students in the three-six learn keyboarding skills. It's hard to have a third grader, fourth grader, fifth grader, sixth grader type a paper if they don't know how to keyboard. And by the time they get to fifth and sixth grade, those bad habits are already starting to be there and it's hard to correct and change them. So that's something that we're going to try and look into is seeing if we can somehow implement a curriculum in the three-six area with keyboarding. They also talked about their new social studies curriculum and that it's really nice to finally have a social studies curriculum that is aligned to state standards so that these teachers don't have to go in and change and tweak the curriculum to meet the standards set by the state. We talked about students that need extra help, that it would be nice if we had volunteers at each grade level, maybe five or six, who would meet with students once a week with a handful of students who are behind or who need extra help for each grade level. And that's something that we maybe could approach PET with or just put it out there into the community that we are looking for volunteers to help with these students, to help keep them, keep them current on their learning. Because once they start to get behind, it's just a domino effect. We talked about the conferences, the way we did them this last year, the back-to-school conferences for K six. This was the first year since I've had children in the district. I don't know if it's the first time ever, but that they had back-to-school conferences for these students before Labor Day. And then when, after Labor Day on Tuesday, everyone K through twelve started their regular classroom day. And most of the teachers expressed concern about this at the K six level. They felt that, that students weren't, that it was a long first week for some of those students, kind of overwhelming. They also felt, they also were concerned that it had taken away from some of their classroom time to set up the classroom, get them ready for the new school year. And also that some parents had expressed concern because they felt this had been such a tradition. They hadn't really planned on it or really paid close attention to it and weren't prepared for that change. And we also talked about how some of the teachers think, some of the class, grade levels are having conferences with groups of students as opposed to one-on-one and with groups of parents as opposed to one-on-one and how some of those teachers are expressing concern that perhaps some of the parents or students in those meetings are not as open with the teachers as they might be about concerns or things that they would like to have, see implemented or helping their students throughout the school year. We also talked about a research project that Mr. Derek Spear is doing in our PE department. He's done some research about some other districts throughout the country who have implemented physical education classes every day and the benefits that it has on children's learning. He is specifically doing his, this class, he has a group of, I think he said, is it twenty-five? Or so, students who come every morning before school and their parents bring them. And it's a, it's a great cross-section of our students from all different dynamics of life. And he's doing a research project with them to see if it affects their learning and their test scores and their behavior throughout the school day and throughout the whole year. And from the research that's been done previously, he said it shows that having PE every day in the elementary classroom is, is very beneficial to students' overall learning and well-being.
How many minutes?
This class that he does is thirty minutes. I don't know with the research from the other class, other schools that he had, that he had done and that they had, that they had done, that he'd looked into. I don't know how long their class, their PE classes were. But that's something to look into as well. They talked about, this was only a few days into the hot breakfast program, but that the kids were very excited to be having hot breakfast every day. And as we heard from our food service department tonight, they seemed to be excited about it. There's maybe some changes in the menu that might be needed, warranted. If it gets repetitive, some of the students might not be as excited to participate in the program. But it sounds like the food service department is really excited and to be working with kids, teaching them about nutrition and establishing those healthy habits early on. It was a wonderful meeting. I very much appreciated speaking with all the staff there. It was very informative and, and I, I learned a lot and I felt like we had some very good discussion.
It was very good, very interesting. Any questions about the three-six meeting, staff meeting? All right, then we had a staff welfare committing, meeting after that. And Rufus, would you want to talk about that?
It was a marathon meeting. I think three hours. We first discussed the pay equity report, which is, which I previously presented. Jody Christensen presented some information concerning the Q Comp program, which is the staff development program. And the staff development, staff development and curriculum committee has brought forward three options to modify the existing program. Those three options are, one, the first option would be to hire a full-time teaching coach at each building. The second would be to maintain the current system as is. And the third would be a hybrid option. And those options will be discussed at faculty meetings in January. Kim Niss and Andy Tradot brought forward a pair of concern regarding the current attendance policy. We had some discussion about that and the staff welfare committee supports the existing policies. And Kim Niss and Andy Tradot also presented some work that they've done concerning adding some additional curricula to the high school. And the courses that they are considering introducing are AP computer science, classroom in the school, human anatomy, classroom in the school, genetics, AP, classroom in the school, world history, classroom in the school ceramics, and cadet teaching. And the cadet teaching program is one of novel program. It's kind of a preview to, you know, to teaching, taking a group of students and giving them some exposure to what it's like, you know, working at the elementary school, partnering with some of our teachers. So the high school administrative team will, will have further discussion about these possibilities and bring for, bring forward a final proposal to the curriculum committee for consideration. And then the last thing that we discussed was a mental understanding concerning the anticipated retirement of Mr. Mallett, who plans on retiring at the end of this current school year. And, and so we discussed that and approved it. And that was it.
And by thirty, we were done. And then the next on the list or on our board committee reports is the high school student lunch, which I attended with Nicole and Dan. And I think there were fourteen students there. And very fun, always to visit with kids. And it's just amazing how involved they are in, in the school and what, in school involvement. It's very fun. We talked about writing and grammar and there's still a concern whether or not they're prepared for the ACT test, which now all juniors take. So we talked about that a little bit. And Kim Niss and Andy Tradot were there and they were taking notes. And they're, they have a whole list of follow-up things to do too. We talked about the school atmosphere. What can we do to make school more inviting and make kids feel a part of the system and part of belonging? And they had some definite ideas about like painting, what colors are painted in the murals and color in water, fountains in different places, just all kinds of great ideas too. Even stuff about ceiling tiles, making those more fun than just a plain old ceiling tile. So very fun. Talked a little bit about how the announcements are handled at school and some changes that could be made better so that kids are aware of what's happening so they don't miss deadlines for things. We talked about peer tutors. How can we have students help be tutors to kids that are falling behind or need a little additional help? And then we spent a lot of time on course offerings, which was very fun too. It was some of the same courses that we had talked about the night before. So they were talking about them too. So like anatomy, what, the world, the world history. Just different things. Genetics, yeah, computer science, yeah. All good ideas, yeah. Yep. And what else? Just anything you will remember that?
This, this particular group was mostly seniors and a few juniors. And they were all very high-level, high-driven. I mean, I'm just so impressed by some of the really talented young people that are in our school and how conscientious they are and how, you know, how seriously they took the meeting and how they really, you know, think of their school. They think a lot of very positive things and they always have a good idea. And I thought there were a lot of really, really good ideas presented to us to, to make things more comfortable for them, better for them, easier for them, more at home. I think that's what everybody kind of, the, the main thing I got out of it was that they want to feel like it's a home where they can feel relaxed and learn. Like in places like the library, you know, and, and have it be an enjoyable experience. And a lot of them were very complimentary of their teachers in helping them be welcomed like that and experience that at the school too, so.
I was impressed that, at how insightful they were. And they didn't want easy. They weren't asking for easy. They really want to be prepared for college and for careers and how they, they focused a lot on the need for being prepared for college-level classes. And they brought up these, these courses that we've been talking about as almost as if they'd been given a script. But I think it just shows then that our administration is aware of these needs because they have been talking to students. And the fact that these students brought them up with us also shows that it is a great need to have these new course, courses offered to our students.
Yeah, they do listening lunches with the students and that's where some of these were presented. So that was fun.
We talked about technology too, a little bit, about Chromebooks and iPads and things like that too and what was working and what hadn't and how a lot of them felt pretty comfortable with the way it was, was coming along now.
Yeah. And then I asked about bullying and they just feel like that happens in the younger grades, you know, when they're just coming into the building. But they were pretty not thinking that that was a problem, at least for the juniors and seniors. So that was interesting, kind of outgrowing it or is not prevalent in their group. So I think that's about it, wasn't it? But if you ever have a chance to go have lunch with the kids at high school, it's very fun, very fun to talk to them, yeah. All right then, SDCC meeting, Nicole?
Yes, we met last night. We, it was a very short meeting, which usually SDCC is not. But we spoke about what Rufus talked about with the changes or the possible restructuring of Q Comp. We also talked about the calendar. It's time to put together our school calendar for next year and that we would really like to have it be two years out so families can plan and staff can plan. And if anyone in the community is interested, they can contact any of us that are on the curriculum and policy committee. Or Mrs. Rosen is working on it from the elementary school. Mrs. Osley is one of those from the high school. Anyone in the community or you can contact them with any suggestions or concerns that you have about the current calendar or changes you'd like to see. Mr. Brown, can you remember any of the other people that volunteered for that committee?
I'm thinking.
There were more, there were.
There were more.
There were more. I, if, we can get those names too if you want to contact.
Caitlin Martins.
Caitlin Martins from the elementary school as well. So if you, if any of you would like to contact someone regarding that, we can either get you the names or, or take the information from you and make sure it gets to the right people.
That's it?
Yes, that is.
Oh, that was short then. All right, anything else that needs to come to the board this evening?
Can I add one more thing? I just was reminded, on Saturday, Caitlin Martins and I had the opportunity to take twelve of our students, actually eight of our students and four of our alum to a political event down in Clear Lake, Iowa. We took them down to see a presidential candidate, Donald Trump. And it was really an interesting event. And what I enjoyed the most about that, first of all, our, our students were the only students that were there. There were seventeen hundred people there and we were the only ones that brought students. And afterwards, like Jake Columbach, who has actually been to three of these events. He went to see Jeb Bush, he went to see Hillary Clinton and now he's gone to see Donald Trump. He was actually interviewed by someone from the national press. They actually interviewed Jake for twenty minutes. And that'd be a nice follow-through if one of the local, uh, either radio station or local newspaper want to, uh, talk to Jake, because he's had some good experience. But my enjoyment, number one, our, our students, we, we took a whole, a whole variety of students to this event, and, um, just very impressive to take our students anywhere. And, uh, I always get compliments whenever we take students to any event like this. I have adults that come up and say, geez, your, your students were just so nice, and, and we do have great students, and, uh, it was a great opportunity for them. But what I enjoy the most of these events is afterwards, we go out for supper, and it's, I just sit there and listen, and it's just great to listen to high school kids talk about politics, and talk about how important it is for the next presidential election. So that's pretty cool.
Very cool.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Brown, for taking students fro, to these political events. It's, I mean, from all spectrums of the political parties, and to take on a Saturday or in an evening to take your time to do that, I think says a lot about your commitment to our students and their education, and it really is an exciting process to see come, you know, unfold these, um, the democracy that we live in, and the wonderful right that we have to vote, you know, to get kids excited about that, and to see how it happens is, is a great lesson for them, and I appreciate you doing that for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
I, I do have one more thing too that we should probably mention. I got an, uh, email today from Matt Mahoney that, uh, informed us that our, uh, high school track and field and cross-country coach, Bob Bonk, will be inducted into the Minnesota Track and Field Coaches Hall of Fame here at the end of the month at their annual meeting in the Twin Cities too. So congratulations to, uh, to Bob on another very well-deserved honor.
Very cool. Thank you. Anything else? Keep thinking of things here.
Kind of like last call.
Yeah. Very good. Very good. All right, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion, some of them.
Second.
I have a motion by Nicole, a second by Dan, to approve adjourning the meeting at 6:09 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.